The court puts out race.
So, it's really beautiful. So I was in class, well, I was going full-time during the week and then on Saturdays, uh, and then evenings.
We do have a number of presentations today. We have a number of commissioners this morning. Um, so we would ask brevity to be the name of the day as well. And colleagues, because of some potential threat of a quorum loss, we also, when we do receive a quorum in the council chambers today, we are going to begin to take those items on the agenda. Uh, so today is Friday, um, I think it is, September, uh, 25th, um, this morning, excuse me, 23rd, I'm ahead of myself. Welcome to council chambers, this is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. Uh, if we could, um, we're going to ask Mr. Labange to begin his presentation.
Very much, Madam President, please welcome the great mayor of our sister city of Busan, Korea, Mayor Huh. Members, as you know, uh, this is our 32nd annual Korean festival, tomorrow is going to be a great parade down Olympic Boulevard at Seoul International Park, is the wonderful, wonderful festival there, but the mayor and his delegation is here, uh, Busan has a longstanding relationship with Los Angeles and he's here for just a few brief remarks, mayor, please address the city council.
Uh, good morning, honorable members of the Los Angeles City Council, it's a great pleasure to meet you. I'm honored to have this opportunity to address the city council which represent the citizens of Los Angeles. On behalf of the four million citizens of Busan, I would like to thank you for cherishing your sister city relationship with us for almost forty years. I'm also very grateful to you for ensuring that hundreds of thousands of Korean Americans read comfortable and happy livings in L.A. I came here to build up the deep relationship between our two cities to celebrate the 32nd Los Angeles Korean Festival and to describe Busan's highly attractive business environment to investors in California. This is my first visit to Los Angeles, I am very deep impressed by its clear sky, sparkling beaches and beautiful historic buildings. L.A. is a city of hope inspiring people to go out and to realize their dreams. Moreover, L.A. is a center of politics and the heart of American economy with its world famous motion picture, entertainment and high-tech industries. Our visit this time has broadened our perspective and has gave us a better understanding of your city. I have made several trips around the city since my arrival and learned that we have many things in common. First of all, L.A. and Busan as both gateway to the Pacific Ocean serving as port logistics center and major marine tourism centers. Second, our two cities are at the cutting edge of the global film industry in Asia and globally. Such similarity will provide us with a variety of new ideas to expand cooperation and exchange between our two cities. Boosted by the boundless enthusiasm of our four million citizens, we are now moving rapidly to becoming a globally competitive city with a focus being placed on port tourism convention and film industries. I believe that there is much room for further cooperation between our two cities which will ultimately benefit both of us. In November, the 2005 Asia-Pacific Economic Cooperation Summit will be held in Busan, the center of conventions and exhibitions in Korea. APEC is a great opportunity for our two cities to join hand across the Pacific to further develop our friendship. Distinguished members of the city council, for the bright future and prosperity of both Los Angeles and Busan, please lend your support to our mutual effort. Once again, thank you for inviting me to address you today. I wish you good luck and happiness and the city of Los Angeles great progress. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, welcome to Los Angeles.
Madam President, thank you, on behalf of the council, we present you this great book, "Los Angeles: Past and Present." Uh, mayor has had a wonderful visit with Mayor Veer Ragosa, and I know some of us are riding tomorrow in the Korean festival parade down Olympic Boulevard, so we say, "Kumsabida."
Thank you very much.
That's okay, we'll do it. Thank you, Madam President.
Colleagues, just another announcement, uh, this morning, our buttons are not, uh, working, um, so that you need to actually push the computer sign for you to acknowledge that you want to have a speaking opportunity as well as voting today, uh, both of those. Uh, Mr. Parks, are you ready for the next presentation?
Thank you very much. Let's give them a really big hand. It's an honor, honor to stand here today with colleagues Parks and Smith and Mayor Veer Ragosa to honor this great institution, the University of Southern California, on the occasion of its 125th anniversary, and I'm proud to be a two-time graduate. Okay, so not everybody can claim that, okay? Uh, USC is one of the oldest continuing academic and cultural institutions in Southern California and is a founding institution in the social and cultural fabric of the city of Los Angeles and Southern California. Founded in 1880, the University of Southern California has grown from 53 students and 10 teachers to its current population of over 32,000 students, over 3,000 faculty members, and over 14,000 staff people. It is the largest private sector employer in the city of Los Angeles with an economic engine that boasts a budget of $1.5 billion per year. USC personifies 125 years of innovation and excellence in the fields of education, communication, social sciences, medicine, healthcare, engineering, planning, architecture, the arts, law, business, and of course athletics, bar none. The University of Southern California established the nation's first schools of gerontology and international relations and a program in cinematography, the country's second school of public administration, and the first schools of architecture, business, medicine, pharmacy, and social work here in Southern California. The faculty at USC have earned important distinctions from numerous highly regarded bodies including the American Academy of Arts and Sciences, the American Association for the Advancement of Science, the American Philosophical Society, the Institute of Medicine, the National Academy of Engineering, and the National Academy of Science. USC has a total of 224 endowed chairs and professorships and the 1994 Nobel Prize in Chemistry. Trojan athletes have demonstrated skill, commitment, and teamwork, bringing fame to the university and to the city of Los Angeles and have produced 357 Olympians, the most of any university in the United States. Since 1912, USC has sent gold medal-winning athletes in every summer Olympiad and have produced a double national championship football team, brought home five Heisman trophies, have trained a baseball team that won five straight NCAA titles, to date still an unmatched record.
Thank you, Ms. Perry, uh, let me continue this, what I'd like to say is that the US students, faculty, and staff have demonstrated exemplary public service. public service through academics, service learning, and community outreach contribution, fostering a tradition of sharing with neighborhoods immediately surrounding the campuses. In fact, many of the middle and high schools in that area are guaranteed scholarships for young people who reach a certain grade-point average. In the year 2000, USC was named College of the Year by the editors of Time Magazine and the Princeton Review and is named one of the eighty-one colleges with a conscience by the Princeton Review based on its outstanding record of community involvement. Currently, under the leadership of President Sample, the tenth president, he has led them to a great academic institution into the area of unprecedented national and international recognition in academics and athletics. University of Southern California has solidified its status as one of the nation's leading research universities and is a leader in providing innovative community outreach and service-learning programs. And today, an adoption of a resolution by Ms. Perry, Mr. Smith, and myself, along with the mayor and all elected officials, that we're congratulating the university for its one-hundred-and-twenty-fifth anniversary, recognizing outstanding accomplishments as an institution of higher learning, a research powerhouse, and an important economic engine, and a great private university with a public heart. Before we do that, let me get to Greg. Come on, Greg. Then we're going to get to the mayor.
Well, thank you very much. As also as a two-time graduate of USC, I'm very proud to be here. When I first went to USC, it was a great school with a great tradition of athletics, but it's become truly a monumental school in the United States. Not, again, just our back-to-back national championships in football, but on volleyball, water polo, et cetera, but it's become an academic institution of great renown throughout the world, not just here in L.A., not just in the region, but in the world. USC has the largest number of students, of international students, of any university in the United States of America. That is the impact USC has on the academic institutions of the world. And I'm truly proud to say that my university, my institution that I graduated is now rated as one of the top academic schools in the United States of America and the best in the West Coast. I am proud, I am proud to be here as a graduate of USC. I'm proud of what Stephen Sample has done to our university to make my degree worth so much and to those young people who are going to graduate behind us that your degree is going to be one of the best degrees in the world. So congratulations, Stephen Sample. Congratulations, one-hundred-and-twenty-five years of USC traditions, and may it continue as our three-peat.
Let me bring in the mayor, and as you notice, he's a little out of color today. He's not wearing his Bruin blue today, but because it's such a great occasion, we've allowed him to wear the SC colors today. He's the honorary Trojan for today. And let's ask the mayor, Antonio Villarogosa.
I told you I was going to be a mayor for the whole city. Let me say how proud I am to be here today because I've often said about USC, and for those of you Bruins who know that I am an avid Bruin and lifelong Bruin, I can tell you this. We are so fortunate to have a university, a world-class institution, that is headquartered here in Los Angeles, in USC. Not only one-hundred-and-twenty-five years has this been our oldest institution of higher learning, but in many ways, what distinguishes USC is that USC is not only a world-class institution, but a world-class institution here in Los Angeles that sees its destiny as tied to Los Angeles. And I can tell you, I was very honored when, four years ago, after I lost that little marriage race that I was in, it was USC that offered me a job as a professor and USC that offered me to head the Biomed Research Park Initiative. And I can tell you that I was very proud of that. Just, what, two weeks ago, USC had a reception, supposed to be three hundred people, then it was six hundred people, then it was a thousand people, then it was twelve hundred people, and they had to close the number of people invited, and it ended up being two thousand people on the Doheny steps, and I'm very appreciative of that. But more importantly, we're appreciative of the fine talent and the young people who go to this great university, who will be coming back to Los Angeles across the country and across the world. And so I join my colleagues today in acknowledging this national champion university. I am so excited to be wearing these colors today.
It's cardinal and gold.
Cardinal and gold. I can barely pronounce them. And I'd like to call up the provost, Max Nekias, to come up for a second. There you are. President Sample couldn't be with us, had a little slight medical issue, but he sends his greetings and his warm appreciation and so on. His behalf and on behalf of the university, Mr. Provost, I'd like to proclaim today the University of Southern California Day. I got to meet the national champs at a practice the other day, and as we all know, they're on their way to be national champions again, and in many ways, that's what USC is, our national champions. Congratulations to all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And before we have representatives from USC speak, we have Councilmember Cardenas followed by Councilmember Garcetti.
Thank you very much. I'm standing behind these headdresses here. I just wanted to congratulate USC on how far you've come. And it's not only the amount of time you've been a university here in Los Angeles, the quality of education that you've provided to many, many families and individuals and generations, and for many generations to come, I congratulate you. Also, I think it's only fitting that I stand with the mayor and talk a little bit about UCLA, another tremendous, outstanding university here in Los Angeles. Thank you. You keep clapping as long as you want, I'll wait. You know my bias already. I just wanted to ask you, to the representatives of USC, if you could please report to Mr. Sample that the council members who are really USC fans here are a little soft, because as I was noticing while the band was playing, that, for example, Councilmember Parks, he was going like this. "Okay, USC, you've been number two in the city for too long. You're number one. You're number one. You don't have to do this anymore. It's okay. Today's USC day. Number one. You can do it. Number one. You earned it. You deserve it.
Councilmember Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I think that refers to the two national championships, as Mr. Smith was pointing out. But it's great. Congratulations to President Sample, to the entire USC community. USC has been a part of so many people's lives here in Southern California. In 1880, when USC was founded, it was the same year we paved our first street here, Main Street in Los Angeles. Gives you an idea, twenty-one thousand miles of streets later, just how far both USC and this city have come. I have no doubt the mayor's alumnus-of-the-year award for UCLA is doing real well today with that on, so we're going to take a picture and make sure we send that over to your alma mater. And we have a nice balance here, actually, on the council with, I think, three votes both directions right now. So if you would vote in a block, USC could be a very powerful force here on the council. But in my own family's life, my grandfather used to cut the hair of professors at USC. He was an immigrant from Mexico and because of that, had a shop in Olympic in Vermont very close by to USC. And due to that, my own father learned about USC, got a scholarship and went there, and then I had the privilege of teaching at that first school of international relations on the West Coast at SIR here at USC. So it's an amazing institution, one which has weaved into so many families' lives here in Los Angeles. And College of the Year a few years ago will continue to go from strength to strength, and we wish you all the best in making sure this is a beacon for so many people's opportunity here in Los Angeles. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. And Mr. Parks, from all the Bruins, we congratulate as well. Yes.
You know, I forgot to mention, by the way, I need to thank USC because on loan to us for a year is my very, very important and significant member of our senior management team, Carolyn Webb Demasias, that's heading up our initiative around our schools and collaborating. And we're very thankful for Steve Sample and Provost Nekias and USC for allowing us to have her for a year. We had a little bit of a disagreement whether it was six months or a year, but we've all agreed it's now a year, and we thank you for that.
Thank you. I want to take a moment to introduce properly our provost, who in fact became provost of the university this June, appointed by the president and ratified by the Board of Trustees. Max Nekias, who is here representing the president this morning, was formerly our dean of the Viterbi School of Engineering. He is an extraordinary engineer, academic leader in his field of engineering, and is poised to take the university on to even greater heights in the academy. For those of you who say, "What is a provost?" A provost is the academic officer of the institution, second to the president, and the dean, and all of the faculty, in fact, report into the provost. So he is responsible for our academic mission. He's also responsible to make sure that we do the kind of research aggressively on the national and international scene. And so we are so thrilled to have him. We had our formal reception yesterday to inaugurate him, install him as the provost. And in fact, as we were talking this morning, his first decision was actually to allow me to come and work with our new mayor in the city. So he's doing great things as far as we're concerned already. With that, we are so thrilled to present him to the council and let him speak on behalf of the university, Max Nekias.
Thank you, Carolyn.
And I'm sorry to interrupt. We're having trouble with our buttons today. Mr. Labonge would like to speak before our provost.
I know, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Mr. Mayor, for... Is this your first day that you've declared? How many days have you declared as a mayor? This is pretty special for the University of Southern California. So give Mayor Villarogosa a big hand for that. It is your first day you declare. Now, I watch those things, so I'm glad, so we remember that in history. And give this band, this part of a greatest marching band in the United States, a big The band represented, the University of Southern California represented Los Angeles and the university and our sister-city of Nagoya at the big international fair. How many were out there in Japan on that? Wonderful to see that, Nagoya and all that. But the greatest thing, and I'd like to see the provost, and I want to hear you speak. I want to make friends with you because the mayor has an ambition that we both share and others, to build a little hole out Wilshire Boulevard to make people move easier, and as an engineer, you could support us in that subway. But the University of Southern California has done so much for all of us, and it's not just down on Figueroa Street. It's at USC Hospital near the county, USC in the county. The relationship is all over. But the greatest relationship, which I'll close with, Madam President, is one of the greatest Trojans of all of them all was John Ferraro, who these chambers are named after. And I think that's the great contribution. From John Ferraro to many other Trojans have made such a great contribution to Los Angeles' life. So I want to thank you, I want to thank the University of Southern California. I want to thank you for two of my seven brothers who were able to go to the University of Southern California. Unfortunately, Mr. Mayor, I got to be honest, I didn't have the grades, but thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Provost, we'd love to hear from you now.
Good morning, Mayor Villarogosa, Councilwoman Wendy Gruehl, and Councilmen Parks, Perry, and Smith. On behalf of President Sample and the entire University of Southern California, I want to thank the mayor and the entire city council. You, the people of this great city, have supported USC since its founding in 1880. One-hundred-and-twenty-five years ago, one-tenth of the population of Los Angeles, one thousand people, came on foot, on horseback, and by horse-drawn trolley to a mustard field on the outskirts of the dusty little village of Los Angeles to witness the laying of the first cornerstone of the University of Southern California. Since then, USC and Los Angeles have grown and grown up together. Over the years, we have persevered despite economic ups and downs, earthquakes and civil unrest, and somber pronouncements that the Southern California dream is now dead. In the early 1900s, as Los Angeles grew, many people wanted USC's trustees to relocate USC to the countryside. However, USC's president at the time, George Finley Bovard, was at demand that USC was a city institution whose role was to help solve the problems facing the city of Los Angeles. When our current president, President Stephen B. Sample, arrived at USC in 1991, both USC's trustees and President Sample reaffirmed USC's commitment to be a university at the heart of the city. And USC, the city institution, stayed put, but we didn't stay still. Indeed, we redoubled our dedication to public service. We formed alliances with community partners in order to enhance the education, safety, and health of our neighbors. And we redoubled our dedication to helping Los Angeles to solve urban challenges in education, transportation, public health, the environment, and countless other areas pertaining to the well-being of the city. In the past few weeks, all of us here have seen how the devastation from Hurricane Katrina underscored the fragility of neighborhoods, even the fragility of an entire city such as New Orleans. This catastrophe demonstrated that the most vulnerable among us, those without resources or safety nets, often bear the brand of hardship and disaster. All of us who are part of the city of Los Angeles, and that of course includes the University of Southern California, must work together to make our streets safer, our public schools better, our local businesses healthier, and our bonds as a community stronger. I believe it's that sense of looking out for one another that sustains us and that will sustain this city and USC in the decades to come. USC and Los Angeles have experienced a remarkable one-hundred-and-twenty-five years together. Here's to the next one-hundred-and-twenty-five years. May we all thrive and prosper and make this extraordinary city the best city on earth. Thank you.
Thank you very much for those presentations. I see we're going to take a photo there. I see we're going to take a photo there. Colleagues, thank you very much. We do now have a quorum, so welcome to City Hall. Welcome to the council chambers. This is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. Today is Friday, September 23rd. Council meets three times a week, Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. All meetings are open to the public. For those of you that cannot make it to City Hall, meetings are televised via cable on Channel 35 or can be viewed by our website at www.cityofla.org. This meeting is now in session. Madam Clerk, excuse me, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardinals, Garcetti, Gruehl, Han, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Zine, Padilla, 11 members present and a quorum. Madam President.
Thank you. Our first order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Zine moves. Mr. Smith seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Han moves. Mr. Labange seconds.
Madam President, before beginning the agenda, there has been a request to continue item 42 from the continuation page to Wednesday, September 28th.
Unless there's objection, that item will be continued.
On the regular agenda, items 1 through 18 are items for which public hearings have been held. Items 1 through 11 are the commission appointments. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
We'll hold those on the desk.
And that would leave council with items 12 through 18.
And remember, colleagues, our buttons are not working, so you need to press your computer to do this. Are there any items of 12 to 18 that anyone would like to call special this morning? If not, Mr. Clerk, those items are before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
Next order of business.
Items 19 through 41 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Mr. Rosendahl.
12, 14, 15, and 17 special.
12, 14, 15, and 17. Okay. Any other specials, colleagues? Mr. Rosendahl, item 17 was approved, so we will have that reconsidered. That was just approved in the last order.
Madam President, I believe it was several items that Mr. Rosendahl had asked.
12, 14, 15, and 17. Okay. Colleagues, we're going to open a reconsideration of those items, 12, 14, 15, and 17. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
Those items will be back for reconsideration and considered special. Yes, Mr. Cardinals.
Madam Chair, forthwith on item 13.
Forthwith on item number 13. Okay. That item will go forthwith. Any other specials, colleagues? If not, the balance of the items are before us.
Madam President, just so the council knows, they are items 19 through 41.
Thank you. Items 19 through 41. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
Those items have been approved. We'll recess momentarily to go into our special agenda. Mr. Clerk.
Cardinals, Garcetti, Gruehl, Han, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Zine, Padilla, 11 members present and a quorum.
Thank you. Those items are now before us.
Yeah, item 1 is an item for which public hearing has been held.
Okay, item 1 is now before us, seeing no one on the speaker queue. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
11 ayes. That item's been approved.
Items 2 through 4 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Yes, Ms. Han? We're in the special agenda?
Can we continue item 2?
Until?
Till next Wednesday?
Okay.
On behalf of Tom Labange.
No objection. That item will be continued to next week. Mr. Clerk? Oh, Mr. Zine?
There are 37, please, for verbal amendment.
Okay. We will go back to the regular agenda. We will do that.
All right. Thank you.
Any other items on the special agenda? Not, we'll vote on, I think it's item number 3 and 4 that are before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
Those items have been approved. We will now adjourn the special meeting, go back to our regular meeting. Mr. Zine has asked for number 37 to be reconsidered for verbal amendment, and we have now received a speaker card on item number 36. So without objection, we will reconsider those items. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
Those items are now reconsidered and will be put on our special. Items 36 and 37. Any other items, Mr. Clerk, before we go back to presentations?
No, Madam President.
Okay, our next presentation is by Ms. Perry. Is Ms. Perry in the chambers? That's right, Ms. Perry, we're continuing on presentations. Are you, are we ready to go?
My next presentation will be on behalf of the Los Angeles Athletic Club, and I just need to get my notes here. Okay. Thanks. We have another birthday or anniversary celebration. Today, I'm joined by Steve Hathaway, president of the Los Angeles Athletic Club, Karen Hathaway, chairman of the board, and Corey Hathaway, director of marketing, to celebrate a very special milestone in the club's history, their 125th anniversary. We are joined here today by Karen, who will speak in just a minute, and Corey is now the third generation, fifth, I'm sorry, fifth generation of family club management. 125 years ago, on September 8th, 1880, '41, young pioneers of Los Angeles formed the Los Angeles Athletic Club to promote health, grace, and vigor. You'll have to tell us about the grace part. In the intervening 125 years, the club has achieved a distinguished record of accomplishments that transcend the boundaries of Los Angeles and permeate the history of athletics throughout the world. The club became a vital and active force in the Olympic movement and was highly instrumental in obtaining the 1932 Olympic Games for Los Angeles. And the club and its members were an integral part of the organization and operation of the 1984 Olympic Games. The club and its members have made immeasurable contributions to the enrichment of the community and is recognized for supporting young athletic students through the John R. Wooden Award Program. It has been a part of the club's history and the history of Los Angeles, and the club has been a leader in the social, civic, and cultural development of our city. The list of past and present members is most impressive and includes some of the most respected and prominent athletes, businesspeople, civic leaders, elected officials, government officials, developers, entertainment notables throughout the country. They have been at their present location at Seventh and Olive since 1912. Next week, as part of their anniversary celebration, they will be having a club open house, a formal dinner dance, and a day of sports activities to celebrate this special anniversary. So I wanted to take the opportunity to acknowledge this milestone, commend the Los Angeles Athletic Club and the Hathaway family and staff and members, and thank them for their distinguished and colorful history and for their immeasurable contribution to the world of sports, civic leadership, community participation, sorry about that, community participation here in Los Angeles. And now I'd like to ask if our chairman, with our chairwoman, would like to say a few words, and then followed by the president.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Perry. Madam President, members of the council, I want to thank you for honoring us today. We did not think to bring our marching band with us, but I can tell you that our founders in 1880 got in their carriages and got on their horses and did go down to watch the laying of the cornerstone at our wonderful USC University. We've been a cornerstone in this town, downtown and in Los Angeles, for, as you now know, 125 years. We're particularly proud of many things. Councilwoman Perry pointed out some of them, but one thing that was not said, and I do think is worth mentioning, long before it was politically correct, decades and decades ago, we opened our doors to people of all ethnicities, women and also people of various sexual orientations. This is a milestone that today is actually quite unique. We enjoy being a part of this community. We hope to be a part of this community for many, many more decades, perhaps centuries to come, and we thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Perry, for bestowing this honor on the Los Angeles Athletic Club. I want to thank the council. And just a reminder that the late John Ferraro, whom this room is named for, was a very active member of the Los Angeles Athletic Club, and we certainly miss him. But again, thank you to the council and to all of Los Angeles in sharing this celebration with us.
Thank you very much, Ms. Perry. I know you have a second presentation this morning?
Mr. Labange was talking. He doesn't need a mic.
No.
Okay. I wanted to ask members of the YEAH program to come forward. Or is it, and I'm sorry, YEAH, it's the YEAH program. Y-E-A-H, YEAH. Tony Cepeda, the program director. Nancy Hinojosa, Robert Trevino, Sukhvee Cepeda, Victor Molifield, and Danny Lopez. Everybody up here? Come close. So everybody can see on TV. Does that say USC? What does that say? I love you. Today, I am joined by supporters, teachers, and recent graduates of the Y-E-A-H program, and I was just very happy to go to their graduation last month. The YEAH program, or Y-E-A-H program, is a unique program where young people mentor their peers about very significant topics, such as bringing valuable information to them about sexually transmitted diseases and information about drug and gang prevention. Older students teach middle-school-age students, and in turn, they share their knowledge with their peers. It is a self-motivated and inspirational program. And I want to give special thanks to Tony, I'm going to ask him to say a few words, and to the members who helped bring this project to fruition. They are absolutely bringing transformation into the lives of young people in our community. And I also want to congratulate all the graduates. And I want you to continue to share what you have learned with all the young people in our community. That is one of the most effective tools to teach important information about saving young people's lives, peer-to-peer teaching and counseling. I'd like to ask Tony just to step up to the mic for a minute and say a few words about the program.
Thank you. First of all, we would really like to thank you for supporting the program, and it's an honor for me to be raised in CD9 and now to be able to work in CD9. All these children are children of incarcerated parents who carry this stigma, and for the first time, they teach younger youth. And they also teach elementary young children about sexually transmitted diseases. They talk about incarceration, and they're empowering themselves. As our logo says, YEAH stands for Youth Educating and Advocating for Health. So we'd really like to thank you for that. And we could only have one graduate here today because the rest are in school. But that's what we're about.
That's good. That's good. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, and we've got, you guys meet me in the back, and then I'll be right there. Got one more, and this shouldn't take too long. Pat Smith, the associate director of the, I guess she's from Earthshare of California. Great, okay. I wanted to take a moment to acknowledge and support an important charitable campaign currently going on here in our city, and I'm joined by Pat Smith, associate director of Earthshare. And, oh, she brought a whole crowd. Okay. Oh, she has her own entourage. Raquel Sanchez, Development Associate, Hispanic Scholarship Fund. Marcel Watts, Development Coordinator, Brotherhood Crusade. David Menchaca, Resource Development Director, United Way of Greater Los Angeles. Chris Baca, Executive Director, Community Health Charities of California. This past month, Earthshare kicked off its 2005 City of L.A.-City of L.A. Combined Charitable Campaign. This worthy annual campaign offers our city employees an opportunity to give directly from their paycheck to one of the many great charitable organizations, including Asian Pacific Community Fund, the ones that I mentioned before, Meals on Wheels, United Latino Fund, United Negro College Fund, and I think I said United Way of Greater Los Angeles. I'm going to let Pat Smith say a few words, and then David Menchaca, who will take, give you more information about this campaign and how we can all help to make this year an even bigger success, but I want to urge all of you to take advantage of this great opportunity. Pat.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Perry. Good morning to the honorable members of city council. I am here to announce the start of the City of Los Angeles Combined Charitable Campaign. The campaign kicked off on September 20th and will run through October 31st. All of the 10 organizations in the campaign support and provide valuable programs and services to the residents of the City of Los Angeles. Now I'm going to introduce my co-lead for this year, David Menchaca of United Way of Greater Los Angeles.
Thank you, Pat, and good morning, council members. I want to take this opportunity to thank city employees for their past support and encourage those to continue supporting our community through this charitable campaign. As we heard from the provost this morning, supporting community services is an important part of maintaining a stable and healthy community. We are one step away from a natural disaster, as we know, living on fault lines throughout California. And without the proper support of our local agencies, such as the Red Cross, the Salvation Army, those first responders, we need to ask ourselves, what kind of response are we going to offer our city members? What type of response? Are we going to be ready? And the best way to ensure that we will be ready is to make sure that we support our nonprofit community, as they are the first responders, working hand-in-hand with city and county entities. And we're missing an opportunity to fund those organizations. Right now, we participate, city employees only participate at a 10% level. We have 90% of the employees currently not participating. And what better way to establish long-term funds and secure that we will be able to respond than to give through this campaign? I'd like to thank everyone for their support and continued support and hope that we're able to raise the bar this year. Thank you very much.
We'll go out this way. Thank you. Thank you. Madam Chair.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce Mr. Weiss for an acknowledgement this morning.
Mr. Zine, if you could join me? We are awaiting the arrival, the momentary arrival. He's here. Our colleague Dennis Zine. Want to thank my Lebanese friend, Mr. Zine, for joining us in a, in a great show of solidarity to honor the folks from Chabad and to let all of you know and let the city know that on Sunday night, this Sunday night, we will have the annual Chabad telethon. And we're joined here by, first among equals when it comes to, it comes to rabbis named Kuneen, we have the Rabbi Kuneen here, one of his sons, Rabbi Yose Kuneen, and the Rabbinson Kuneen. Thank you all for being here to let the world know about this important occasion in the city and to frankly let everyone know that it's important that this event needs to continue happening in the city of Los Angeles, because Chabad has a worldwide reach, but a very local flavor to it. And nowhere is that flavor more pronounced and more important than in Southern California. And that is due, frankly, entirely to the efforts, the dedication over the last several decades of Rabbi Kuneen, who is with us today. There are many of you who have probably wondered over the years, what, what is this thing called Chabad? What does it mean? And just to let all of you know, it's, it's just an acronym. We have acronyms in English. It's an acronym in Hebrew for the Hebrew words, meaning wisdom, understanding, and knowledge. That's what, that's what Chabad is. In a nutshell, it's so much more than that. We're going to hear from Rabbi Zine, and then we're going to hear from Rabbi Kuneen to tell tell us a little bit more about this important occasion.
And we're also going to hear from Rabbi Rosendahl.
Rabbi Rosendahl. Thank you. Thank you, Jack. We're honored to present this today. We're going to be at the studio on Sunday, helping promote this wonderful effort that takes place. Twenty-five years. We're commemorating 25 years, and the event takes place Sunday across the country. We ask people to tune in locally. It's going to be on Channel 18. But this has gone on for many, many years. Some of you may have seen the tractor trailers that are posted around the city regarding the event taking place on Sunday, Chabad's annual telethon. We're going to be a part of it. We invite people to join us, to give contributions, and it helps many, many people throughout, not only the City of Los Angeles, but throughout the country and other parts of this world. So please join us on Sunday. Make your contribution. Help Chabad and all the wonderful work they do, the social justice that we all need in this country. And being a Lebanese-American, I support my colleagues, my friends, to make this happen. I will be there on Sunday. Thank you. Rabbi.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Mr. Rosendahl.
Yeah, Madam President, you called me Rabbi Rosendahl. Well, I must say this. My Rabbi is Leonard Bierman, though I am a Catholic boy, but we're all together in this world. And it's an ecumenical spirit that matters. And having done this, your 25th national anniversary, 40 years in Los Angeles, and the social do-good stuff that you do for all of community, we all applaud. I hope you raise tens of millions of dollars at least this Sunday. God bless you for what you're doing.
God bless you.
And thank you. And I know I'm going to be able to join you on Sunday as well, so you'll be well represented by the City Council. And Mr. Labanj.
Bring your dancing shoes.
Yes. He'll dance with me. Thank you, Rabbi.
And I would like to say, I'm going to ask my wife, Rebisson Kuneen, to give her a great hand of applause to respond. But first, I would like to take a moment. This reads Rabbi Schneerson. That's our Rabbah. And our Rabbah, who physically is no longer with us, I'm sure we can do him proud if we were to take one moment, all of us here in the council, and have a silent moment of prayer that the Almighty God, the God of all of us, regardless race, color, or creed, should watch out over the tens of thousands of His children trapped in highways in a bus where unfortunately, folks who are being evacuated end up dying in that bus. May the Almighty God watch out for all of those in the harms way of Hurricane Rita and all of those suffering in shelters from hurricanes and all other troubles. And in the honor of the Rabbah and the merit of the Rabbah and all of those who pray for their safety, may God keep them safe. And let us say together, amen. Mrs. Kuneen, it's my pleasure to introduce my Rebisson, my partner, for the last 40 years, Rebisson Odell Miriam Kuneen.
Thank you. In the name, on behalf of the whole Kuneen family, all of our children and grandchildren who God has blessed us with since we arrived in California 40 years ago, we would like to thank the wonderful, honorable council members of the City of Los Angeles for giving us this opportunity to appear today before you. We wish all of you much success in all of your noble endeavors on behalf of our great city. May God bless you with a happy and healthy, sweet New Year.
Thank you very, very much. Thank you, Mr. Weiss and Mr. Zine. I'd like to now ask Mr. Parks for additional presentation.
I'd like to ask one of our youth council members, Barbara Hernandez, to come up. Colleagues, often, as you know, as we work out in the community with young people, we do a lot of work. We try to find different programs for them to get involved with, and few times, we have people that use these opportunities to then go on and accelerate. And we're here today to honor Barbara because she's a member of the 8th District Leadership Council. She was selected as one of 40 young high-school-age women throughout California to participate in the Capital Focus Project on the Second Annual Summer Institute of Women in Politics. It was held in Sacramento, June 21st to the 24th in 2005. Barbara, along with many other young women, was afforded the opportunity to develop leadership skills while learning about the historical and contemporary role of women in politics. For more than 20 years, Capital Focus has provided middle- and high-school-age youth the opportunity to study the issues of institutions and processes in California state government during a three-day-long program conducted during the school year. The development of the Pilots' Summer Institute is in response to a high-level interest in a program focusing on women and requesting that they consider developing more lengthy programs to be offered during the summer month. We're pleased to learn that Barbara was selected to attend a worthwhile event and serve as one of four young ladies representing the 47th Assembly District. She is an amazing young lady who has overcome many challenges in her young life. As a member of 8th District Leadership Council, she has proven to be a leader who leads by setting a positive example. She's dependable, smart, committed, improving her life and making a difference in her community. Upon graduating from the Youth Opportunity High School, she plans to send Santa Monica Community College, where she will study child development. This certificate of recognition is hereby presented for her participation in continuing to use the platform of the 8th District Youth Council as a means of developing her expected talents and moving forward in her life. So Barbara, thank you very much.
I would just like to thank Councilmember Bernard Parks and everybody here at the City Hall. And foremost, I would like to thank my principal, Mr. Smiley, Mr. Michael Smiley, for always encouraging me. A year ago, I didn't know who I was and who I would become. And I realized that dreams can only go so far in your head. And you have to turn your goal, you have to turn dreams into your goals so that they'll be easier to achieve. And I started with a dream, and I woke up here. So that showed me that my goals are accomplished, and there is more to accomplish in my life. So I would like to thank all of you again for this wonderful opportunity, and this is when I'll be my last time seeing you all here at City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you very much. For another presentation, Councilmember Parks.
Thank you very much. Let me ask Mr. Ali Mohammed Ismail to come up.
Ismail.
Ismail. Where are you?
Right here.
Right here, okay. Basically, what we have today is a program in which many of us have participated in over the last 10 years. The Partnership Walk is celebrating its 10th anniversary this Sunday, September 25th. It was inaugurated in Los Angeles in 1995. It's a unique 5K run-and-walk event that brings together individuals, families, colleagues, friends, and united for a common goal of reducing global poverty. They have conducted 25 walks throughout the United States over the last decade, including Atlanta, Chicago, Dallas, Houston, and Los Angeles, where 160,000 people have been involved in raising over $18 million. The Partnership Walk is an initiative of Aga Khan Foundation, a nonprofit organization that's committed to ending poverty, hunger, disease, and illiteracy. It is an organization of volunteers in communities around America. Established in 1981, it works for the common good of all citizens regardless of their gender, origin, or religion. Partnership Walks are held in many, many more than the 20 cities across the nation. Brings together families, business, people, civic leaders, and local communities. In addition to raising funds and walking, Partnership Walk participants learn about the challenges and aspirations of people in the developing countries through interactive exhibitions, cultural performances, and demonstrations. 100%, and I repeat that, 100% of the funds raised in the Partnership Walk go directly to the projects that improve the local living conditions in countries throughout Africa and Asia. It explores international development issues via a specific theme based on one of Aga Khan's foundation's focused areas of health, education, rural development, and civil society. In recognizing the year 2005 as United Nations Year of Microcredit, Partnership Walk is highlighting the vast potential that microcredit has in reducing poverty and vulnerability and empowering women. The theme of Partnership Walk 2000 is investing in people. The tagline highlights how access to even a modest financial service can allow people the opportunity to meet and exceed their basic needs: healthcare, school fees, and clean water, and enterprise. Partnership Walk 2005 will be held simultaneously in Atlanta, Chicago, Dallas, Houston, and Los Angeles. It is resolved today with the City Council, along with the mayor and all elected officials, that we commend the commitment of Partnership Walk and to end global poverty and extend the best wishes and continued success in your 10th anniversary. So Ali, I'd like you to say thank you. And I also would like to introduce all of those who have worked.
Thank you, Councilwoman Bernard Parks. Thank you, City Council, for this honor. At this time, I'd like to, we are all volunteers of Aga Khan Foundation Partnership Walk. And I'd like to introduce some of my fellow volunteers here. On my right, Mr. Amir Vishani, Mr. Sadiq Judah, Amjad Khan Mohammed, and Ms. Noor Virani. On behalf of Los Angeles Partnership Walk team, I'm honored to be present here today and to accept this honor that is being bestowed upon us. On this special day, I would like to share with you a little bit about Aga Khan Foundation USA, for which I have volunteered for the last many years. Aga Khan Foundation is committed to alleviating poverty in remote and poor regions of Asia and Africa. For more than two decades, its program has focused on helping people create lasting solutions to lift themselves out of poverty. This is done by investing in people, supporting their drive, desire, to expand opportunity that leads to a healthy and more prosperous and dignified life. The foundation works with community at the grassroots level to build the skills and tools they need to become self-sufficient. By offering help, helping hand, not a handout, millions of people have made remarkable strides along the journey towards self-reliance. Each year, Aga Khan Foundation USA sponsors the Partnership Walk, and this year marks the 10th anniversary. Partnership Walk takes place in major cities across the USA to make Americans aware that we can make a difference in reducing poverty. Each of us can contribute to building a safer and healthier world. I'm delighted that we are celebrating the 10th anniversary of Partnership Walk. Over the past decade, 160,000 people have participated, raising $18.5 million. These funds have brought hope and promise to disadvantaged families and communities in places like Afghanistan, India, Mozambique. 100%, let me repeat that, 100% funds raised at the Partnership Walk goes directly to the foundation's project. Not a penny is spent on administrative costs. Our work is being, our work is about investing in people. When you invest in people, when you partner with others, the results are extremely powerful. I take this opportunity to salute our hundreds of volunteers who are very committed to alleviating global poverty and making a difference in the lives of less fortunate. Our volunteers have generously contributed their time, talent, and energy to make Partnership Walk a reality year after year. It is with this great enthusiasm and through building partnership, partnership with community, government, non-government organization, donors, and volunteers, the results happens. Partnership Walks works as a bridge linking the spirit of humanity as we work together as partners to create a safer and more peaceful world for all. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak with you today, and we look forward to seeing each of you at the Los Angeles Partnership Walk on September 25th at Rose Bowl in Pasadena. Thank you, City Council.
Thank you.
Time is 8:30, and at 11 o'clock is our opening ceremony. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Garcetti?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Parks, for doing this. And I just wanted to pay my respects to the Aga Khan Foundation, the entire Ismaili community as well, doing extraordinary things, not only here locally but internationally. Your international development efforts have really been a model throughout the world, one in which we can learn a lot here in Los Angeles, as we look at small business development too. I know my father's been a friend of the foundation for many years, and I look forward to partnering with you more closely in the years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Thank you very much, Honorable Garcetti, but this presentation will not be complete. There are two facts that I want to mention. As of yesterday, the volunteers of Aga Khan Foundation were working side-by-side, Red Cross volunteers, in Houston and other parts of Texas, helping the displaced people with medicine, medical service, food, and medical supplies. If you ask Governor of Texas, Honorable Perry, he will tell you what he thinks about the Aga Khan Foundation. When tsunami struck Southeast Asia, the people of Aga Khan Foundation were the first one to reach the victims and help them with food, medical supplies, medicine, and all those necessary things that they did. You know, such a noble, global effort should be supported by all of you, not only that just the Councilman Bernard Parks and Councilman Zine, you know, but all of you should support us, encourage us, and help us in fundraising. Your presence is like a donation to us. But you know, it's hard, I understand, to take time out from Sunday, but Honorable Parks is supporting us for the last so many years. Every year he's there. And Honorable Zine has committed that he will be there, but we need your support, and you encourage mayor to be there if he is mayor of all the city. You know, why are we being ignored? I have told to that mayor, because he's my friend, I have known him, and I have known you, I have known your father was a member with me at the Rotary Club, and I have known Honorable Labanj and all that, but I need your support.
Thank you. Ms. Gruel is going to prepare for presentation. In the meantime, Mr. Labanj would like to make an announcement.
Mr. President, thank you very much. Please let us welcome a delegation of the government of Mongolia led by Senator Gunshuk, who's visiting Los Angeles. If you could all please rise, this delegation is here to meet with local firms and develop business and investment relationships. We certainly welcome you to the City Council chambers, and I hope you go back to Mongolia with that great fight song from USC in your mind. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Gruel.
Thank you, Mr. President. It is really my honor to present today a certificate to someone that we're saying goodbye to, William Bruce. Bill has given... Bill has given the city of Los Angeles more than 36 years of service. He joined, yes, that is quite an accomplishment. He joined the city family on September 22nd, 1969, as a junior administrative assistant with the CAO. He then was promoted to administrative analyst, senior administrative analyst, principal administrative analyst and senior administrative analyst too. And he was responsible for budgetary analysis functions and labor relations renegotiations for the community development department. In 1981, he was promoted to the chief administrative assistant and was transferred to CDD, where he held the positions of director of training and job development, chief grants administrator, chief administrative assistant and chief management analyst. He was responsible for the rent stabilization program and the federal job training program and our annual consolidation program. If that was not enough, Bill was responsible at CDD for their computer systems, risk management, environmental review activities and all of those other support functions that are really vital to making a department successful. In May of 1999, Bill was appointed to the position of the director of airports administration for the Los Angeles World Airports. There, he oversaw the activities of human resources, procurement, risk management and purchasing divisions. He also provided support for the departments for aviation facilities, Los Angeles Airport, Ontario Airport, Palmdale and Van Nuys Airport. Bill, a Bruin, I know, it's very difficult for us today, he's wearing his UCLA tie, earned his Bachelor of Arts degree in political science from UCLA in 1967. He went on to earn his Masters of Public Administration from Cal State University in 1971. Aside from all the work that he has done in the city of Los Angeles, he was an adjunct professor of political science, lecture classes in public administration and local government at Cal State LA. Bruce and his wife, Donna, have two children, although they're taller now and bigger, I don't, you know, I don't know if they like to be called children anymore, but Andrew and Morgan, they still enjoy snow skiing, hiking, backpacking and visiting national parks. I'm very sorry to see Bill go, and Bill and I met 24 years ago when I came to work for the mayor, and Bill was one of those people at CDD that I could call for advice and counsel. We attended a lot of meetings together, community meetings, but Bill was one of those individuals that always was calm, cool and collected, knew the answer and was someone that the city of Los Angeles was lucky to have had for an employee for over 36 years. And if you change your mind, Bill, we'd love to have you stay and continue to give us your advice and counsel and expertise as we move forward in the city. But it's just my pleasure to present to you and your family, because I know your family had to give up a lot sometimes when you were out at those meetings with the community development department till late in the evening and on weekends, but it's our pleasure to present this proclamation and resolution to William "Bill" Bruce. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I'll turn around and I'll do it.
Councilmember Perry would like to say a few words. Councilmember Perry.
Hi, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Bill, I just wanted to rise and say congratulations too on your retirement. I had the good fortune of working with you in CDD in the 2000 census, and you were there at the time, and I have to tell you, it was a chaotic time and, you know, your leadership and management style made it a lot more pleasant and organized and focused experience. You were always solution oriented and exhibited the best management practices wherever possible, and I just wanted to recognize you for that and to say thank you for your contributions.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Wendy. I just want to say a few things. You know, being with the city for 36 years, you serve under a number of people. I've served under five mayors, about 53 council members, about a half dozen city attorneys and controllers, but what I'd like to really say is that I've really enjoyed working with a number of you in prior roles, like what Jan Perry mentioned. We got to know one another as she served the city in a different capacity. Greg Smith and Ed Reyes, similarly. What I'm really pleased to see in this era of term limits is that we have so many members of our council who have served the city in other capacities before becoming members of the council. I think that's very important because one of the downsides of term limits is the loss of institutional memory and organizational context, and I think the city is going to be in good hands because of so many of you who have served the city in prior capacities and can bring that to the table. Thank you very much. I am honored with the presentation, and I'd like to also thank my family for being here, my wife, Donna, my daughter Megan, her husband Daniel, my son Andy was not able to be here but is here in spirit, so thank you again.
Thank you. We have Councilmember Reyes.
I just wanted to make sure publicly I thank you for all your hard work. Back in the early 90s, when we were dealing with many economic development strategies that then Councilman Ridley Thomas was working on, then when Councilman Hernandez came on and chaired the committee, another hard work that I saw the department do, and you were the piston that just kept moving, kept going, no matter what came at you, you produced. And I always admired how humble and quiet you were, but yet the product was coming out as it should have been. I want to thank you for your diligence, and we're going to miss folks like yourselves who, as managers, as directors, as leaders of the departments, sole purpose is to serve the city, and despite all the turbulence of the politics and the personalities and egos, the work gets done. So thank you for your hard work and I hope you enjoy your golden years with your family and friends, and may God bless you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have Councilmember Smith.
Actually, I punched my button before I knew you were a Bruin, but I'll go ahead and speak anyway. Seriously, as you mentioned, we met a long time ago. In fact, it was 1980 when Hal Burns was chairman of the then Grants Committee, that you and I worked together on almost a daily basis. And one of the things I really appreciate about Bill, and I to this day appreciate about Bill, is when I wanted a straight answer about what was going on at CDD, Bill always would give it to me. And we went through a succession of general managers, but one stable force over there through all the changes was always Bill Bruce, and I knew I was always going to get the right answer and the straight answer. And from a former staff person's position, I can't tell you how much I appreciate that and that honesty, and I just think you deserve everything you're going to get in the next few years as a retired city employee, and thank you for all those years, incredible 36 years of doing so many good things here in Los Angeles, and you've got a lot to be proud of. And I didn't know Daniel was your son-in-law, now I get to work with Daniel, so that's wonderful too. But Bill, it's a pleasure working with you. I'm glad to have called you a friend, and come back anytime, we can always use you. Thanks.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Bill, and just want to thank you for all of your longevity and quality of service that you provided for the city of Los Angeles. And I just thought I'd make mention that there's actually a council member or two who were born after you were hired by the city of Los Angeles. But that's a compliment to you and your service and your dedication, because it just goes to show you love this city, you've dedicated your life to this city, and we're better for it, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. A little bit of housekeeping before we go to our next presentation. Our next presentation will be from Eric Garcetti. Members, we're having a problem with the queue system here, so if you want to be recognized to speak from your chair, please raise your hand. I know they taught you that in kindergarten, so we all are capable of doing that. Instead of, try to push your button, hopefully it'll kick back in, but if it does not, then go ahead and raise your hand to make sure you make eye contact with the chair so that we can recognize you at the appropriate time. Okay? Thank you very much. Next, we have Councilmember Garcetti for presentation.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. President, and colleagues, it gives me a great joy to be able to present to us a colleague from overseas who has joined us here today, Councilor Jan Gru, who is here from the Gold Coast Council, the second largest council in Australia, which is part of the sixth largest city, fifth in Australia as well, in Queensland. And Ms. Gru is, Councilor Gru, excuse me, is here spending some time bridging that ocean that divides us, but also linking together some of the initiatives that she has been engaged with as a city councillor in Australia to some of the activities and the commerce that we have here in Los Angeles. She's here as part of a trade mission from Warner Roadshow Studios Australia, and the center of Queensland's film and television production is located right there on the Gold Coast. And I know for all of you that travel the world, this is of particularly good contact to have right there on the beaches of beautiful Queensland. Gold Coast is known as Australia's innovation city. It reflects a commitment to developing creative strategies, broaden and strengthen the economic base of the city, but as I was reading some of the details about the Gold Coast before this presentation, it's really a very diversified economy. Obviously tourism is a big part of it, film and television, but a number of other industries as well that are here. And we know that there is a potential that people would say you're coming here to steal production away to Australia. We know that there's plenty of production that we can share between both the United States and Australia, making both Hollywood and the Gold Coast even stronger with everything that you're doing. And certainly, we depend on Australia for a lot of the production that companies here do, sometimes sending an editing piece from here in Hollywood as we go to sleep over to Australia, and then when Australia goes to sleep, it gets sent back to us, shortening the time that companies can actually get a movie to the market and other things as well. Councilor Gru has always, has also been a noted environmentalist, and it was nice to read about some of the initiatives she's taken, as I know many people on this city council have made that the focus of their work in their time here. And everything from coastal engineering and eco-efficient manufacturing, some of the green industries that will be critical to the success not only of Australia, of the United States, but of this entire globe, have been at the center of her work as well. She has been a councillor since 1994, moved to where she is right now in 1979, so calls at home, and is a self-professed film buff, so we're glad to welcome her here to the creative capital of the world and to the place where Tinseltown indeed takes those dreams and those stories of all of human beings and tries to put them on celluloid, and we really are so pleased to have a partner in Australia. So with that, we'd like to give a certificate of welcome to Councilor Jan Gru, Gold Coast City Council, Australia. On the occasion of your visit, and this is our full name, El Pueblo de Nuestra Señora La Reina de Los Ángeles, on behalf of this city council, we extend our warmest wishes and hopes that you will visit us again soon. So with that, ladies and gentlemen, I present to you Councilor Jan Gru.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Before your guest speaks, we'd like to have Councilmember Rosendahl would like to say a few words.
My colleague, Councilman Garcetti, informed me about the 11th district, which is what I am the councilman for, and the residents in my 11th district, and now I feel a special connection with your country, and I look forward to going there someday. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, and it's wonderful to be here. We feel a close bond with the United States and particularly with Los Angeles. As your council member has already explained to you, we are a city of half a million people with a budget of $800 million. We have four million tourists a year, and our main industry obviously is tourism, but we have 75% of all of the film production in Queens and takes place on the Gold Coast, most of it at our Warner Roadshow Studios. I chair the Economic Development Committee for council, and my colleague, Yasmin Friar, is here. She's one of our business development officers. This is obviously one of the most exciting areas to be involved in now because we deal with a whole range of areas, including major city projects and cultural events, film, food, all sorts of events that all add to the economic development of our city. We're very excited. We currently have projects for a $125 million rugby league stadium, which will be going ahead shortly, and also a large cruise ship terminal in the city. It is the best place in the world to live outside Los Angeles. We have a wonderful climate, a fabulous lifestyle, beautiful beaches, and I love it. I've been there a long, long time and raised my family there, and I do invite all of you to please come over and visit us on the Gold Coast. Thank you. And I'd just like to make a small presentation, if you wouldn't mind passing that on to the mayor?
Sure.
And that's for you. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. We'll now go back to the regular agenda. Mr. Clerk, I know we have commission appointments, and I know DDP commissioners have a meeting, so I think we're going to take items five, six, seven and eight.
Items five through eight are the appointments of Mr. William Burke, Mr. Nicholas Pasouris, Mr. David Nahai and Ms. Edith Ramirez to the Board of Water and Power Commissioners. On item five, Mr. Burke has submitted a letter of withdrawing his name from nomination.
I'd like to enter, yes, Mr. Cardenas, I think, was going to move to receive and file that item, and Mr. Cardenas, if we could ask all the appointees to come to the front table, please.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas, please.
Thank you very much. Good morning. Once again, I think it's appropriate that we thank you and congratulate you for putting your names forward to volunteer for the city of Los Angeles. You're all very talented, you bring a wealth of knowledge and experience, and yet you're going to be volunteering your time, your very precious time, to the people of Los Angeles on this very important department. And we were reminded once again for about five minutes this morning how important this department is, as the lights went out for about five minutes. And we're working on trying to get down to the bottom of why that happened a couple of weeks ago and why it happened again today, and now, should everything go forward today, which I expect and hope that it will, you will be part of the process of trying to get down to the bottom of how that department is running, whether or not it is efficient, how they're contracting, who they're contracting with, what they're doing right, what they can do better. They do do a very good job, I must say. The Department of Water and Power of the city of Los Angeles is respected throughout the nation. It is a department that is asked to give information and to advise many other departments and associations in this, in the industry itself, so it is a great department, but it still has oversight. And as board members, the first line of oversight above the staff is your responsibility to evaluate their work and to help make the proper decisions, and it's your decision as a board member that's going to make the decisions somewhat final, and then it's the city council and the mayor who has an opportunity to have a legal process as well as to what those decisions will or will not move forward. I mention that is because not so much that you don't understand that, you're fully aware of that, as we've discussed it both in my office and in committee and now here on the floor, I just want to remind the people of Los Angeles how important this is and the fact that you do understand those facts. One of the things that I'd like to bring up, as I mentioned earlier, who we contract with, how we do business. The Department of Water and Power is actually expending billions of dollars a year, some of it to buy energy, some of it to pay their employees, some of it to hopefully buy cleaner energy and bring us into a place where we have a cleaner system. When it comes to energy, the Department of Water and Power has initiated and has begun to move forward on what they call a renewable portfolio standard. Basically, in layman's terms, that means getting away from dirty pollutants when we're creating energy and getting to much more cleaner methods of creating energy. Unfortunately, there's a price to pay. It tends to be either slightly more expensive or tends to be double or triple the amount of money per megawatt, per kilowatt. Mr. Nahai, you're very involved in that industry and in that aspect of efficiencies. You're very involved when it comes to renewable energy. Can you just share with us a little bit about what your vision is for the department when it comes to renewable energy?
Okay. Well, I think, thank you, Councilmember Cardenas, and thank you to the rest of the city council for the privilege of appearing here before you this morning. I think we can all agree that what is not acceptable is the present situation that we have here in the city of Los Angeles, which is to have only 3% of our energy come from renewable sources. I believe, as I believe that my fellow commissioners do, that Los Angeles is in a unique position to become not just a national but a world leader with respect to renewable energy. We're blessed with more than our fair share of sunlight, which gives us tremendous opportunities as far as photovoltaic technology is concerned, and we have, I think, an opportunity to attract a great deal of business here. The issue, of course, is how do we get there in a way that is fair to our ratepayers, that is fair to our workers, that is transparent, that, and that has the full cooperation, buy-in and understanding of the city council. I think we're all looking forward to our first meeting this afternoon. I think the issue of renewable standards, not just solar but wind, geothermal, biomass and other opportunities are going to be very high, I think, on this commission's list of priorities to pursue. And I think, as you know already, this is not going to be a rubber-stamp commission. The commissioners take this The commissioners take this task, this mandate, this honor very, very seriously. And none of us have any desire to come and go as commissioners without making sure that we've effectuated reforms for the betterment of our city. We have to do that, however, not on the backs of ratepayers who may already be under financial pressure. But I can pledge to you that it will be one of our highest priorities to try to move us in the direction of substantially expanding our renewable portfolio.
Thank you very much. I'm glad to hear that because it's going to take the leadership of the management at the department, of the board, and also this council to make sure that we do move in that direction. It can be done, it should be done, and we have to make sure it happens. When it comes to contracting with firms, Mr. Pasouris, you're an experienced businessman. You know what it's like to not only hire contractors, but you also know what it's like to actually bid on contracts. Do you think that there can be some improvement when it comes to the efficiency and the kind of work product that we're getting out of our contracts and also the diversity? Do you think there's room for improvement there?
Councilman, I will reserve an opinion whether there's room for improvement until I get on the board. However, from my experience, having served over 17 years at the MTA, big organizations tend to gravitate toward big companies because those companies claim to have done it before, they have the financial and the human resources. However, I would tell you, at 1 o'clock today, and I believe, by the way, public employees are very good people. They want to do the right thing, once you give them the guidelines. And today, they will hear guidelines that they may already follow or they should follow. We have to open it up to small companies, and I'm not necessarily MBS, WBs, small businesses.
Qualified companies, right?
Because as I explained in my visit to the committee, you have to give a chance to small companies, to young people, to have the opportunity to grow and prosper. Also, you have to spread it. And I'm referring particularly on the MBS, WBs, not the usual suspects, not the politically connected. That will be loud and clear this afternoon because no one on this board will want to hear someone says they are connected to Pasouris, or Nahai, or Ramirez. They are connected to Villarosa campaign and administration. So, we're going to spread the gospel.
I think that's very critical.
But let me come back to the renewable. Tough questions are going to be asked at 1 o'clock today. I'm aware that there have been RFPs over the last two, three years and no contracts are awarded. The Mojave Desert plant, at the end of December 31st of this year, under court decision, will stop. The question is, what are we doing in October to move from natural gas, that we all know is going to move more and more.
Expensive.
But you know, the Pavlovian reaction of the department is sticky to some little old lady in the valley with her rage. Wind, there's a contract, there's an RFP issued over the last year that I understand it was a very cumbersome RFP, which excludes the little companies to compete. And on and on, the hard questions, you know, the mayor gave us a number of directives and one was 20% by 2010. His administration, when you consider November and December, Christmas, and jingle bells, will be six months. Five years, at least for guys in my age, go like, I don't have to wait five years. We want to know by the next board meeting, a master plan, how we are going to get there and if there are difficulties and challenges, the board members and eventually you, the council, have to know how we are going to help them. We are not going to wait two years from now, oops, we didn't make it. We're going to know every three months where you are and what help you need. Councilman, this is a brief. If you want to come this afternoon, you'll have fun.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. I wish you were on the board over the last couple of years because when I got here, I wanted to make sure that we did get the RPS in place. And we finally did after close to 18 months of hard work. But I say that's 18 months of hard work, of diligent effort, but there was about five years of talk before those 18 months. And I appreciate the fact that you're a man of action and when you say something, you follow up with it. So, I look forward to 1 o'clock this afternoon, everything working out very well and that your diligent effort actually is, they pay heed to it to make sure that good decisions are made. I just have one more point, Mr. Chair. I'd like to invite Ms. Ramirez, who, and I say this as a compliment, who's a lawyer, to say a little bit about what you bring to the table. I value your experience and what you bring to the table, especially being a lawyer and your legal background and your willingness to volunteer your time. But what issue do you think you're going to gravitate toward? You're going to cover many things, but the thing that you think you might find your passion gravitating toward on this board?
I think renewables is going to be one of the key issues to focus on.
Can you pull the microphone closer to you? Thank you.
And what I bring to the table is points that have already been addressed by my colleagues here, and that is asking the tough questions, ensuring that there's going to be accountability at the department. The key goal is going to be to bring reliable service, affordable service, to the residents of the city of Los Angeles. And I hope to bring creative thinking as well to the table.
Okay, thank you very much. I'd also like to comment in closing that I think we have a great diverse panel, and I mean diverse in many, many levels, not singularly, but fully dimensionally diverse. And I appreciate your willingness to serve. It's unfortunate that Mr. Burke chose to remove his name. And after speaking to him, I respect the fact that he did it out of respect for himself and the city and everybody involved. So, congratulations and I hope everything goes well.
Mr. Cardenas, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And I'd like to call on Councilmember Wendy Gruhl.
Thank you. And thank you to all three of you for your presentation. These are, and this is a compliment too, individuals who have a lot of experience, some in other commissions, other appointments, where you're bringing that expertise to the city. And so, we have seen this morning when the power outage went out, I was down at the ADSAC Center near the Emergency Operations Center and saw all of a sudden, all those lights go down, all of our streetlights. And it was a great, actually, chance for me to be there to see that. I joked with them, did they plan that outage just for me to see how they respond in an emergency? But we obviously have some challenges at DWP, not only as Mr. Cardenas was mentioning on the contracting and the issues, the control audits that came through and the contracting procedures that we're looking at, all the proprietary departments. But people will be hearing a lot about DWP in the next year as we talk about our budget and our water and our power side and the importance of our being environmentally sound. But I had a special presentation for Mr. Pasouris today. We had the opportunity to chat the other day about transportation issues at breakfast and he told me a story about when he was chair of the MTA, where all he heard from people was, we've done it that way before. When he asked a question about why, on contracting, whatever it may be, he said, they always said we've done it before. So, he decided to have a bowl and he had marbles. And he said, every time someone said, the reason they had taken that policy direction or made that recommendation, that it had always been done that way, he was going to drop a marble into that bowl. So, he said he was going to do this again, and I didn't know if you had any marbles, so I decided to bring you some new marbles so that when you go over to the Department of Water and Power today at 1 o'clock, that you will have them handy and hope that that will not be the answer you get from the Department of Water and Power. But wanted to say, I know that all three of you are going to be very serious about your role and responsibility in overseeing the Department of Water and Power. We have an extraordinary MOU agreement, the first in the city, to ensure participation by neighbor councils as we look at rate increases or any of those changes. I know that you hold the department accountable in that way as well. But I'm looking forward to working with you and congratulate the mayor for his appointment. It's obvious that you all are going to make a big difference over there in the Department of Water and Power. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gruhl. I'd like to call on Councilmember Rosendahl from the 11th district.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have the pleasure of sitting on the committee that oversees this department, this proprietary department, with Chairman Cardenas, who asked a lot of questions, made a lot of comments. The vice chair is Janice Hahn, and I'm the member of it. So, I've met all three of you in a private session. First thing is, as you can see us around this horseshoe, we're talking, we're signing things, we're practically not listening because the city, I must tell you, runs that way. I have to do 18 other things at the same time, which at times I'm offended by. At one point, I heard you say, Nick, every three months. Tell us again what you mean by that.
We are going to get a report every three months of the status of how renewable energy is going to be brought about. We are going to wait a year or two from now and ask the rapporteur, says, well, we have these problems. We want to know the problems, address them now with your cooperation, and plainly put their feet on the fire, simply put, okay? As I said, I've been around, okay, and I know how bureaucracy comes. And you know what they will do? Oh, we hear those things before, here is the new old dog coming here, and you know what? He'll be gone, she'll be gone, we'll be around. Well, maybe. But if we go, the Villarosa administration will replace us. So, it's the Villarosa administration that will be here for the next four years and probably another four years. So, we are messengers. We are messengers. So, you just have to keep the heat on. There's a big question, is, Mr. Nahai asks, why LA has only 3% renewable and Edison Company 19? I don't know, I have to ask, but that's a question we have to ask.
Right, right, right. Well, I'm delighted to see that energy. And Nick, obviously, I've known you for 24 years and I know you're a fighter. We probably have to give you a big bowl for all of those marbles. At least, I hope we don't have to, but we might have to do that. David, you are a leader in the environmental community. Take a deep breath and tell me how we're going to preserve the environment in the role that you're taking now at DWP.
DWP has an indispensable role with respect to the protection of the environment, both on water quality issues as well as on air quality issues.